Yeah, but thanks for saying that. You guys ready? All right, we're gonna go ahead and get this city council meeting going. It's Monday, July 8th, 7:00 PM.
Tom Marsley.
Michelle Latta.
Doug Hunter.
Amy Shutt.
Miles Campbell.
Cody Benson.
Wayne Corwin.
All right, and, uh, Teresa. Let's pray.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity you have given us to be together tonight. We thank you also for your presence with us tonight. Lord, we acknowledge our total dependence upon you as a source of all wisdom, and we ask for your wisdom tonight. We ask that you would give this council wisdom and guidance and direction as they work their way through the agenda tonight. Lord, we ask that you would give them help to work in harmony with one another and with harmony, in harmony with your perfect will for this city. Help them to make Montrose a city that's healthy, a city that has peace and prosperity. And, Lord, anything that could hinder that from happening, Lord, we ask that you would just remove it. Lord, we pray your blessing over this council, your blessing over all of the city employees, and we pray a blessing too over our public servants that so willingly serve our community. Lord, it's our desire tonight that you would be honored in this meeting and in our city. In Jesus' name, amen.
All right, and next, we're going to introduce our newly hired administrative assistant, Heidi.
Okay, I'd like to introduce to you our new administrative assistant, Ms. Heidi, Delee. Does he like Delee? I told you, you're gonna have to give me a year or take me a year to figure it out. I don't think I'm on. No, here. Emma? Anyways, this is what I want to tell you. She started last Monday and worked Monday through Wednesday. And we literally have hardly had to do any training because she came from a similar position, and we tell her something one time and she goes with it. And I cannot tell you how happy I am and how ecstatic I am. I listened to her read customers those first three days when she was covering over lunch hour, took a few phone calls, and I was absolutely in the way. She could answer the phone calls without coming to ask me or Wendy if, for any information. She greets people very, she does a great job. She's great customer service. So I just want to say thank you very much to all of you for letting us proceed with this and for letting us proceed with Heidi. Heidi, she's doing a great job. So if you have any questions, she's just gonna stand there for a little bit.
I just want to say thank you as well. It has been a pleasure, starting here and everything. It's been a smooth transition. A lot of friendly people. I've met everybody so far except for Kirby, so hey, Kirby. And then this evening, meeting the rest of the folks here. It is a pleasure. Like I said, I did come from another city, the city of St. Michael. They did train me well, but I have the love and drive of customer service, and it's been in my heart for, been doing this for almost 50 years. I mean, give or take, I'm 50, so. But it is certainly a pleasure, and I think it'll be a great fit here, so.
Great. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Just welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you on board.
Thanks. It's a pleasure. Have a great evening, folks.
Thank you.
Yep, some good, thank you.
We'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, people up the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Name of the agenda, yeah. There's a couple, um, items. For a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes three to zero. Consent agenda?
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes three to zero. There is no open forum. It is quiet in here tonight. Red County Sheriff's.
So, not a really good report from the sheriff's office. At least no trends that we've noticed this month. I'm sure people are curious about what happened in Waverly. It's an ongoing investigation. Can't really disclose anything that happened at this point. Any questions for the sheriff's office at this point?
Well, fireworks were a real pain.
Yeah, I understand that fireworks are an issue for everyone. We try to deal with them when we have time, but it's an issue of finding where actually being shot from and actually getting people to work with them. No one wants to tell us that they're the ones shooting them off.
Right, I understand.
We just kind of say July is the month of fireworks.
It happens. I know it upsets a lot of people. I'm not a fan of dealing with them either, but.
Well, when they're done up to midnight, that's one thing, but when they're at 2:30 in the morning, that gets a little heavy.
I'm in agreement with you on that one.
Yeah.
Anything else? You guys have questions on?
Forget it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, council?
I just had the city council meeting and the joint council park and rec meeting.
I had the EDA meeting with Doug, council workshop, red county board commissioners meetings, and I managed to accomplish the field training for emergency management, incident command, 100, 200 percent.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job. Good job.
My only one.
I attended special council meetings, or rec meetings. Let's see, I went to the school board meeting that you can all expect to see that I'll be back coming at us in a month. I went to an impromptu meeting on Highway 12 corridor with Tom Emmer and multiple people in Dillon. Kevin?
I'm just gonna do it from back here. Only thing on the activity report is just all the acknowledgements on the bottom. A lot of thanks goes to those who helped us out with our training burn that we had on June 30th. A lot of people donated stuff, supplies and all that kind of stuff. Other than that, it was actually a fairly medium month for us, not too much of an issue or anything. The other thing on the agenda that I have is to accept the resignation of John Wick effective June 30th. Served with us for seven months and 11 days.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Wick.
Second.
Uh, Tom?
Aye.
And Kirby?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero.
And then just a reminder that at the July 29th special council meeting, we will be discussing some emergency management topics, so if you can try and have your GMS done by then, that would be greatly beneficial, so.
Can you do me a big favor?
Mm-hmm.
And send an email with all that information? Reminder?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will do that.
The house burn line model I hear?
Yes, it's not standing anymore. That was our goal, and the garage still is, so.
Uh, park and rec. Do you want to do that ever?
Uh, yeah, okay. We had a joint park and rec, city council and park and recreation commission meeting, and what we did is we worked together to identify the top items that we want to budget for. Trying to find it, sorry. So we did short-term first, which we considered short-term projects that should be done in one to three years. And what we came up with that is to evaluate all the city parks and develop a park equipment plan, build a park shelter on the regional park property. And the reason we came up with that is because there's a need for a place for people to rent, and we figured if we build that, we can start collecting rent on that. We want to highlight existing parks in the quarterly newsletter, so that's something that our utility billing clerk will start doing when she does the newsletters. Constructive new concessions, data cover review. We do have money in the CIP, is it that capital group plan that?
Yeah, it was in our capital group plan.
And then we want to construct some type of gazebo or shelter at North Ridge Park. And I think the reason for that is we're gonna start using that for our skating rink, so we have something that's like a learning place. Our long-term items that we identified were a timeframe of five, 10, five to 10 years to finish. We want to develop the middle section of the regional park, then we want to do the upper section, and then develop the bottom third, and the bottom third would include shelter and bathrooms, playground equipment, a small ball field, and installable. So that was just for that meeting. If anybody has any questions?
Um, on the highlighting the existing parks, I did start doing that on social media too. The first park was Thorson Park. So a lot of people, it's kind of a hidden park, so, but a lot of people enjoy it, so that's good to know that some people didn't know it was there, so. Planning, do you?
All right, I'll run through the meeting minutes from last month pretty quickly. The first item in the minutes is actually to do with this second here, the ordinance amendment, chapter 1031, so I won't really cover that as much. I'll talk a bit more about public hearing in that section. Planning commissioners also talked, and we're going to start looking at the city's sign ordinance. We were asked, I think that was part of a Highway 12 steering committee that commented on kind of the amount of signs along the highway corridor, and looking at cleaning those up. So we initially took a look at it for those reasons, but we also now want to take a look at it because of the amount of content-based code within the ordinance as written, so recent and not-so-recent Supreme Court cases are cracking down a bit further and further each time on what can be included in a city zoning ordinance around the signs from the perspective of freedom of speech. So we're really trying to move as far away from any kind of zoning regulation based upon the content of signs and more towards neutral language, so stuff about size, height, location, those type of regulations. So that's kind of what we're gonna talk about this week with them. We've, itself, and we've both identified areas of the code that fall into that content-based category, and we'll be looking at which of those are narrowly defined to serve a public interest and which of those we need to look at either amending or removing. The other part of that we'll also look at is, we and commissioners had a pretty good discussion about enforcement and permitting of signs. There isn't, I don't think, right now, a formal application for a person that wanted to put a temporary sign or a permanent sign in place, so I'm gonna be putting together those materials as well as we might look into doing something like what the city did with parking pads in terms of a informational packet for residents. Other than that, we kind of just gave a rundown of some of the ongoing projects that we're waiting to hear back from applicants from, so 140 Nelson, the old cases building, et cetera. There wasn't any movement on those in terms of application received, so not anything else for it. The other item here is a request for council action on that zoning ordinance amendment that I mentioned to chapter 1031, alternative energy systems. The planning commission did a really good job of looking at these cities' existing solar ordinance and looking at where there might be opportunities to tighten that language up in such a way that's of benefit to the city while preserving the area for both private residents and commercial businesses to do kind of solar operations within the city. And that can be found on the relief page, starts off 35, but the amended code as written is on page 36. Planning commissioners are recommending that the city council approve and adopt these ordinance amendments tonight. I'll run through them real quickly. At the public hearing, so section one, code will be amended. Section 1032 dot four, in terms of ICS, is hereby amended to the correct section numbering, 1031 dot four. This is something that was brought up by the single participant public hearing who said some errata in terms of the section numbering. It should be 1031 to follow the chapter, basically. And the rest of these sections refer to it by, if they're from that section, in the correct 1031 dot four numbering. Section two is another code amendment. In this case, there was additional language under the setbacks item that had to do with screening requirements. We removed those, and you'll see that screening requirements are now this section three code added, so it didn't make any sense to have screening under setbacks, we just made it its own separate item. And as well, we added a screening requirement for public roadways. As it was, they all need to be screened from residential developments. This allowed me that there is a screening requirement, I think we have it for a minimum of eight feet, and we don't tell them how they have to do that, but that's just a glass of board, and any solar farm that would be in town would have to provide agency of screening from a roadway, sorry. Section four, another section of code added here. We're amending the language around commercial solar farms to have some additional review from staff's point of view. We want to make sure that while we're allowing these solar farms to come into the city and allow for that kind of added tax base, added activity and otherwise vacant land, we're doing it sort of way that doesn't impede the city's future growth. So any solar farms that are identified within the interim build scenario of the city's comprehensive plan that just got passed, which is sort of the area identified as potentially developing by the year 2040, around the time when any kind of contracts that we're making with a commercial solar for a land lease, it'll be, you know, till about that point that they have use of the land. The conditions that we'd be looking for, and this would be done by difference of these staff, would be that it wouldn't immediately abut an existing residential development, and they would not impede future logical extension of urban utilities or public right-of-way as determined by the public works director and city engineer. But yeah, so we did a really good job going through the existing ordinance. Again, this doesn't do any major changes. We're not eliminating any types of uses. It's basically adding a little bit more review on the backend for these larger projects and make sure that we're locating them in areas that will serve the city long-term and that additional screening requirements from. It was, it was really important to the planning and zoning commission that all of these come in and they are viewed on an individual basis by planes only and then by the city council. And have the ability to make certain requirements as far as screen, whatever. So Miles did a really good job of incorporating that into the amended amendments.
Yeah, screening is meant to be kind of a baseline amount.
All right, thank you.
Do we have a form for public vote for? You said it should be okay, right? Yeah.
Yep, if it's approved by the unanimous.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2019 dash 07. I'll second.
All right, I will. I'm Kirby.
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero.
Can I just get, I got a question for you.
Sure.
So with the, with the sign stuff, I kind of was reading through the minutes, what, what kind of complaints were there? Were there a lot of complaints or just one or two or anything specific that people?
They were concerned about those sandwich board signs that are all over the place, and then like LGI, LGI has all those little signs that they just stick in the ground. And they, you know, I've been paying attention when I drive through and I get what they're saying. It doesn't look the greatest, and I didn't know how you would tackle the sandwich board thing, but Miles had some really good suggestions for the communities where they could have them, but they can like be so far from the building, correctly, and wrong.
Yeah, that's right.
And they can only have them out here during business hours, and that's it. Yeah, we have a couple, we're gonna be talking a bit about this one, say, for planning commissioner, but the idea is that they have to be no more than 15 feet from the actual entrance to the business. They have to still, they are inside lock, they can't block, you know, flow of traffic and some of that. And then again, this only out during business hours. These are temporary signs, but we don't want to have them be same to, for the rest of our temporary portal signs, it's usually a, you know, like 14-day permit, that kind of thing, and you can only have so many a year. That wouldn't really work for a business that wants to put out the, you know, $5 sandwiches with a coat kind of sign. But then having it be, all right, you don't have a 14-day limit, but you can have it out at night and all hours kind of thing, it helps to just keep it look a little bit more manageable kind of thing. That was kind of where we first started looking at this, we thought we were just gonna be handling that kind of stuff and looking at temporary, but then we noticed there is a lot of stuff that is either fine and content-based in terms of, you can still have content-based code, but address identification signs, that is a sign regulation based on the content of the sign, it's, you know, the address identification. That serves a public interest and it's narrowly written up. Other stuff like specifically writing holiday signs are permitted is where it now is the question of, is this content-based, is this neutral enough, et cetera, et cetera. Another good example would be, we have garage sales as a separate permitted sign currently, so if you're having a garage sale, you can do it. We'll probably not include a separate garage sale just because that's content-based and we don't have a really good way to rewrite that, but what we'll look at is instead having the temporary sign ordinance be able to serve for that garage sale, so. Same application of a sign that's gonna be up for two or three days, that kind of thing. Having it be handled through the neutral language of the code that only says, if you want a temporary sign, here's the, you know, length of age, you can have it, here's your feet, here's the size it can be. It'll accomplish the same, you know, end goal of having people come in and get the permit for the, you know, they can still have a garage sale, they can still put up signs for the garage sale, but it'll do it in such a way that keeps us out of that content-based area.
Miles, I have a question for you. I was approached by Sid Jantling one day. We ran into each other at the post office. He was asking me about what's going on with the parking lot for the coffee shop.
I believe right there, they are in the process of putting together their site plans and great arrangements plan. I think they're running through a bit of that kind of summer crunch from all the engineering and architectural firms in terms of getting those together. They're gonna be coming to us, I hope, pretty soon. I even talked to Scott in a week or two now, but he basically said last time, I'll let you know when we got all our plans together. They're gonna have to go through us as well as MINDOT since we're on Highway 12, we're gonna talk about adding another access. So I think they want to also figure out that side of things as they're going through.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was talking to Sid about, there's more people involved than just Sid.
Yeah, exactly. It is tricky in terms of just kind of the amount of moving parts, but I think they're at the point now where it's sort of, they're just waiting to get their materials together and then they can, you know, come to us, kind of MINDOT.
Okay. Now, was, I noticed Red County approved a tobacco permit for a guy that's got a vape. Is that here? It said.
Next to Lee's Nails.
Is that where it's going? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, existing building.
All right.
Don't shouldn't they have to like come in and have that approved by city or something? The tobacco vaping claim?
It's all regulated by the county?
Yeah, county and state in terms of the, you know, like helping save these stuff.
Yeah, I was kind of blindsided by that.
Thanks, Miles.
All right, engineers, the engineer.
All right, mayor council, the first item before you tonight is a request to authorize advertisement for bids for the trunk highway 25 improvement project. I believe you're all familiar with those improvements by now street improvements, addition of a trail along the west end of the road, as well as some infrastructure improvements from 7th Street all the way up to Highway 12. Staff has worked with MINDOT to acquire final approvals, as well as the necessary property to construct the project. MINDOT has authorized the advertisement, and then for the schedule that is in your packets, we'd be looking to get bids back on August 2nd, at which point we would need to submit them back to MINDOT to confirm them, and then we could bring them to your August 12 council. So that's kind of this guy that we are looking at, so unless there are any questions or discussions, staff requests that council authorize the advertisement for bid for the trunk highway improvement project.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go ahead and authorize advertisement for bid for the trunk highway 25 improvement project. Second.
All right, Tom?
Aye.
Kirby?
Aye.
And I'll go and I, and motion passes three to zero.
The second item before you is a request to authorize an advertisement for quotes for the Emerson Avenue improvements. So Wayne has been working with public works staff, looking to improve a segment of Emerson Avenue from Chair to Circle up to Midi Lane, it's about two blocks. That is currently only about 19 foot wide, it's just a rural section, so we're looking to take that section and road and turn it into a 28-foot wide urban section in Curver there. So we'll do that by reclaiming the road or milling it, depending on how our quote results come back. The project value is currently estimated to be below $175,000, so we're able to select to quote it, and we don't have to do the public bidding. Quote results, again, based on scheduled packets, are anticipated to be returned to you at the August 12th council meeting. So staff is requesting that council approve the advertisement for quotes for the Emerson Avenue improvements, pending any questions or discussion.
I'm gonna assume that this will pass, or when it does, we're gonna notify all the local schools about this, right? Just so that they can change their bus routes?
Yep, yeah. I would say as we get closer, any sort of transportation impacts, we will, we will handle notices for bus routes, mail, trash, and all your, all your standard processes. We'll make sure that they're coordinated.
Okay.
You also sent letters to residents along that area, right?
Yep, yep. So residents, impacted residents will be, will be notified in a couple weeks.
It's gonna be pretty minimal. It's.
Yeah.
Midi Lane intersection, Midi and Emerson intersection will remain open.
Correct.
And First Street and Emerson, so it'll just be that one little stretch. So it doesn't really affect a whole lot of residents even.
There is no one with a frontage to the area that we are improving. They'll still be notified because obviously we'll be making noise, but no driveways to worry about, which is really nice. People, so for the alternative routes, buses, mail, everything, we'll go around.
I'll make a motion to authorize a request for quotes for the Emerson Avenue improvement project. I'll second.
All right, I'll go and I, Kirby.
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
All right, mayor and council, the third item before you tonight is regarding the Montrose wastewater treatment plant, looking at sludge removal. I'm gonna, actually, we're not waiting here to introduce the background a little bit. I think you guys are somewhat familiar, but.
We've talked about the sludge the last couple of years. We need to get rid of it. Should have been getting rid of it every year, and it's been here so long that it gelled up. It's now we gotta figure out a way to get it out of the tank, get rid of it. We weren't hauling into Buffalo, we'd get like 2% to 3% liquid. It's costing us a fortune for water. So we're trying to come up with a different plan that we can haul, yeah, actually, sludge out and get rid of it. Once that's done, we can, we can turn around and haul a couple loads to Buffalo every year and get rid of it at a minimal cost and what this is gonna cost.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's kind of a no-brainer when you look at the cost effectiveness of option one versus the other two in terms of price per gallon and stuff we're calling others.
Yeah, so that is, these are kind of what we're calling just kind of our rough first, first guess, and what we're actually requesting tonight is direction from council to further explore one of these three options and then come back to a little bit more detailed proposal, a little bit more full-body proposal showing you this is what it's gonna cost to haul it, a little bit more detail. So really briefly, I'm just gonna run through the options. So option one is we bring in this big truck-mounted system. You pump the sludge out of the current tank, it goes into these different stages of the truck. At the end, there's this big rotating drum that separates solids from liquids, as Wayne's kind of touching on, you just bring up the solids that can be hauled away. Option two, we're calling the back box and a guzzler pump. So this one, we pump out all the sludge from the tank and you put it into a big storage box where it has to sit for a while, and then we take the liquid out the top, and then again, haul away the solids. Option three is the second most cost-effective, but council member, as you mentioned, option one is still more cost-effective than the other two. So this option, very similar to option two, it involves pumping the sludge out of the tank in the filter bags. The filter bags essentially collect the sediment, but allow the water to go through, so you collect that water, restore it to the tank, and just haul away the solids to water. So again, option one is our recommendation, and what we're looking for right now, again, is direction to further explore that option to return to you guys a better, more informative proposal that includes the full cost at your next meeting. And what I also want to touch on with that proposal, we're also gonna, oh, and then we're gonna want to do some sort of trial. we're going to want to do some sort of trial period. So there's an estimated 400,000 gallons of sludge that needs to be removed. Before we authorize for any of these options, take it all 400,000 gallons that way, we want to make sure it's an efficient, cost-effective way for you guys to do it. So we're going to recommend, you know, say a couple of days to one week trial of one of these options as part of that proposal. So we'll outline that in there as well.
It's a pretty costly effort, isn't it?
When you, yeah.
You can kick the can down the road, yeah.
So these prices here that you see are the costs to extract the heavy sludge from the tank itself, and there will be an additional cost to haul it that's not included in this proposal, but we'll try to get you guys different options. And as I spoke with Wayne about, there's also other options like land spreading the material. That process involves a little bit more looking into from a permitting standpoint. Can't just drop it anywhere. We'll go get permits and do a little bit more analysis on what level of contamination the material is, depending on how clean it is. So in fact, you can look into more options than just hauling actual landfill as well.
Yeah, you're the experts in this area, wouldn't the biohazard permits be kind of cost prohibitive too for that much?
So it's really just to land apply, it's, again, it's totally dependent on how contaminated it is, so what type of pathogen is there in it? There's three different classes of how essentially nasty the material is. So if we can get it to be a class B or class A, which A, class A being the best, it's a lengthier process. It's still obviously costly to do, it's not free, but might be cheaper than a landfill depending on what we find.
Any other questions?
Do we, can we only get information on one of them, or can we get information on the two most cost-effective ones?
So.
I know it's more work to do it that way, but just to what would be better, you know, long-term, maybe the cheaper one's not better five years from now, but the other one might be.
Yeah, we could certainly give you more information on options one and three. That's what you'd like to direct, if you want to get long-term costs, hauling costs on those two options, that's what we could return you. And I don't know if I mentioned earlier, but these numbers are coming from our wind response division. We've got a sector of wind that deals just with hazardous and non-hazardous waste cleanup. So this is not exactly my full area of expertise, but we've got the people that are there looking at this. Yeah, we can certainly do two options.
I have one question. We wouldn't be looking at hauling all 400,000 gallons in one year?
No.
Most likely not, yeah, based on the available budget, the long-term plan.
Candy cane.
Yeah. I saw you check out the numbers over there, you started adding.
In 42 days, we'll be done.
Yeah, so.
So you're broke.
So more than likely, you would need to do an analysis of how much of your wastewater budget is available to allocate to this process.
Okay.
And it would likely be a multi-year process where you maybe only do these removals for a week each year for a while.
Yeah.
That might have to be how it goes.
Is that going to get us to that tolerable level of other?
So the goal of doing this is to remove all of that really bad sludge, to get your treatment plant back to a functional state that you can remove the other.
We can haul, we have a truck for hauling it to Buffalo and they take it from us. So if we get caught up, we'd be able to do it every year and not run into this problem. Because it's never been.
How much of that 400,000 gallons do we have to draw down to get to that level where it's acceptable and the wastewater treatment plant starts functioning where it's supposed to be?
It is functioning just fine. This is just a storage thing. Or we're, we've got storage yet for a couple of years. We're okay that way.
Gotcha.
So I think what Cody's looking for is just direction from you or what you would like him to do. You don't have to make a motion, but just direct staff to.
Yeah, I guess, I would suggest, I mean, I know Kirby wants to do it more than one option, but you know, needless to say, we'd probably look at option one and option three, whichever is most cost-effective, and put a little more flesh on the bones in terms of what we're looking at there.
Yep, yep, we can do that.
Rest of the councils will keep that? We're good.
Mm-hmm.
We're looking at a difference of, you know, 81 cents per gallon for option one and 36 for option three, so there is a substantial difference there.
Yep, I think option two was right around 180 as a gallon, that price per gallon, just to get it out and so on.
Okay.
Fourth item, I believe Deb was going to cover.
It's pretty cut and dry. I got the agreement from MINDOT for the Trump Highway 25 project, so I just need you to approve the resolution to have them inform with that.
Well, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve resolution number 2019-14, approving Minnesota DOT agreement number 1032034.
Second?
All right, and Kirby.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
I'll go an aye, motion passes 3-0. Amy.
All right, more about the Trump Highway 25 project. So I just wanted to give you a short update on the status of the legal case for condemnation. So that case was filed a number of months ago. We had the hearing. There was no objection to, by any party, with respect to whether this was a public necessity and whether it was serving that purpose. So the court did issue an order finding that it was necessary and that it was serving that purpose. And the court also granted the quick take to occur as of June 25th. So that did occur. We have the legal right to enter the property for that project, which has allowed us to go out for those bids and keep us on track. The actual remainder of the condemnation hearing in terms of coming to a decision by the court on valuation of the properties that are being taken will probably take, you know, around a year to complete, so, which is, you know, par for the course with this type of case. It's not a lot of involvement, it's not a constant year involvement for my office. You have a hearing before commissioners and then they add up to a year to make a decision. So you can expect that to occur next year.
So if I might ask, Wendy, do you have any idea what this is, the cost to city so far? I'm just curious.
I'm going to say from what I was looking at, where it's probably at about between the attorney and Dan Wilson, it's probably a little over 8,000.
And what time period is that for?
Some of it goes back, well, from the time you file, which went back already to the beginning of the year, and then it goes up through May.
And this is from two homes?
Two parcels, three parcels.
It is council member Johnson's, the Rosicas, I believe, own two parcels. And then there was also a small portion of land with a title issue that ownership is unclear, so we had to serve back that day for a while, but that was the updated strip of property. Okay, so no action on that, though, for information only. The next topic is annexation. So I believe when my office took over a little, four, a year ago, we had two major annexation issues, or two kind of competing issues going. You have an orderly annexation agreement with.
Marysville?
Marysville and what's Woodland?
Woodland, yeah.
So all of the properties in Woodland have come in. Those are all resolved. I don't believe there's any issue outstanding with their orderly annexation agreements. The other one was with Marysville Township, who it looked like, based on the information that I had reviewed from your previous attorney's communications, had sort of checked out of responding to any of these issues. And that is the orderly annexation agreement under which the Herzog parcel, if you remember, was included. So without any real response from Marysville Township at the time, or any ruling by the state municipal boundary enforcement unit, what we did was do a kind of unilateral annexation or request for annexation of that parcel to the state. And the idea there was kind of to force the state's hand to make a decision on whether or not your orderly annexation agreement with Marysville Township was valid. You might remember that there was a question of whether the proper procedure under the statute, which has since changed, was followed at the time that our agreement was originally adopted back in 2007 or 2008. So we filed out with the, that request for annexation with the state, and they reviewed all of the documentation and made the determination that, and I'll paraphrase here because I don't remember what exactly the order said, but that you substantially followed what the rules were back in 2007. So they are going to consider that orderly annexation agreement that you have with Marysville Township to be valid, which is great because it means that you don't have to renegotiate or go through the notification and hearing processes for an orderly annexation agreement for that whole area. Unfortunately, that means that the ordinance that we filed for the Herzog parcel was denied. However, at the time of denial, the court also said, I'm taking it upon myself to request an annexation of this parcel. So in order to complete that, all we need to do is pass a joint resolution for orderly annexation under that orderly annexation agreement. So the first thing they have before you in terms of annexations is a joint resolution for orderly annexation of the Herzog parcel. Since we've gotten that clarification from the state, I can reach out to the attorney for Marysville Township, who I've worked with on a number of other annexation issues, and it's a really good guy to work with. He's reviewed it. He said that he didn't have any issues with the joint resolution and that he's going to recommend approval by the township at their meeting on July 29th. So with that said, I would be looking for a motion to approve that first resolution for annexation.
And it'll be resolution 2019-15?
15?
15, yep.
Well, I'm going to have to make a motion to, for resolution number 2019-15 for annexation for orderly annexation agreement from Marysville Township.
Second?
Tom.
Aye.
Kirby.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0.
Great, so the second annexation we have before you tonight is for the Applewell property. The purchase of that property did close on June 26th. If you recall, from a legal or county tax perspective, the portion of property that you bought was actually part of, two parts of two different PIB numbers of property within the township. So in order to complete the separation of the parcels for tax ID purposes, like what you would normally call a lot split, we did have to pursue that, pursue it by annexation. So we had to leave the annexation until after you were the owner. So now that you're the owner, legally speaking, the annexation has come before you. This property is also within the Marysville Township orderly annexation agreement, so I prepared another joint resolution, which has also been reviewed at the same time by the township's attorney. He also did not have any comments on it, and is going to be recommending approval at the July 29th township meeting.
2019-16.
I kind of guessed that. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2019-16.
I'll go ahead and second.
All right, Kirby.
Aye.
I'll go an aye, Tom.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0. When do we start? What would I have at that? Well, I was waiting.
I'm not quite sure.
We just received.
It has to go for bids.
Yep, we just received the information from the PFA and from the state of Minnesota that PFA has approved all of our preliminary numbers, and the state said, yes, they're good, so I think it can go for bids now.
That's Justin, right?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
But he has to get council approval.
Yeah, I'm guessing he'll come to the August council meeting to get, or send everything to get, you guys to make a motion to proceed to go out for bid, yeah.
We're doing that on July 29th.
On July 29th?
That's where we made a special meeting. That's right.
Okay, and so the last thing I have on the memo for you tonight is 121 Hill Street and a consideration of quoting enforcement options. So my understanding of the background, and Deb might be able to fill in blanks if there are any questions, is that back last year, the city was notified that a property owner had done a grading project in the side and rear yards of their house, which included removal of soil along the side yard shared with the neighboring property, and then the dispersion of that soil across the backyard into an area that the city wondered about whether or not was Woodland. But it sounds like upon review by the engineer that that second issue is moved that it's not within a Woodland area or Woodland boundary because of the time when the property was originally developed. So at this point, the only issue staff is concerned with is the removal of property along the border of the home with the adjoining property owner. And my understanding is that there's concerns that the adjoining property owner's yard is eroding and that it may be beginning to affect the neighboring home as well. So because staff believes that this project is under the threshold to require grading permit, none of the code requirements related to grading apply or have been violated in this situation, but staff does feel that it qualifies as a nuisance under chapter 55 of your code. So in reviewing your code, staff came up with a number of different recommendations for how to pursue. I will mention that obviously our first effort was to reach out to the property owner and see if we could get them to come into compliance, but we haven't received any meaningful response from them. So I guess staff, I think, was just looking for your direction based on the number of options available. We didn't want to start down the road without getting some feedback from you on what you would prefer. So you have a number of options under your city code. You do have an option for abatement pursuant to a new section 55.08, which I believe was passed by you last year, possibly prompted by this situation, which does allow you to go through a notice process and then abate the nuisance by yourselves. Obviously, that would come into requiring city finances upfront to ensure compliance of that, with the possibility of, but not a guarantee of recouping those costs from the property owner at a later point. Secondly, you do have an administrative enforcement option, which is a fine option. I don't know if you have adopted a resolution specifying what your fines for non-compliance are at this point, it's something you would have to look into, but assuming that you do have that resolution or those fines specified, the administrative fine process would be sending out notices to the property owner that they have violated, that they're under this fine process, and that they have a certain number of days to comply. And if they don't, they would incur an administrative fine. Again, whether or not collection occurs on those fines is a bit iffy. And then the third option would be criminal prosecution for a code violation. Under your city code, really any violation of the city code constitutes a misdemeanor. And so my office has used this group in the past to gain compliance of the property owner where the city did not want to take on the burden of doing the abatement itself. Generally, criminal prosecution works by just sort of alerting the property owner that you are serious about what's occurring, and generally that's enough, the filing of the criminal complaint is enough to bring them into compliance. But if it's not, criminal prosecution will not give you the right to do the abatement yourself. What it would do is the judge could impose punishment or jail for not complying with his order to remove the problem.
Yeah, this has been going on for quite some time, and I would hedge a bet right now that even if we find them, they wouldn't pay it.
Can't we assess it?
I was just going to say, I have a question, can't we assess it?
So you can assess fines for things, certain nuisance abatements, if it involves a health or safety hazard, which it sounds like this is posing hazard to personal property. um, which it sounds like this is a closing hazard to personal property. Um, it only works if they pay, you know? Um, so then, you know, if they don't pay the tax assessment, then your alternative is to, uh, put it into tax forfeiture.
I was gonna say, at some point, we would get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but even if they, even if we did do that, we put a lien on the property for that fine. Say they paid the fine, the, that's not going to force them to correct the issue.
No, but if we abate the nuisance, we would fix it and we would, uh, charge them for the, for the cost of it.
Yeah.
And then we can, I think if you do like a resolution, I can assess it to their taxes.
Taxes in the end.
Yeah.
And, which means, like she said, that only works if they pay their taxes, but at some point, you know, if someone purchases a property, we would get, if they walked away from that, at some point, we would get the money.
At least the purchase. Right. So it, it kind of puts the financial burden on the city upfront to remedy the situation and then hopefully collect that money back at a later point.
I don't know how Wayne feels, but, um, I will tell you that my suggestion would be the abatement because we have not gotten any kind of response from them at all. They have little thinking.
No, it's terrible.
And the neighbor's fence is falling in.
And he came to city hall and asked if he could, he said, "My whole backyard is clay. All I want to do is take off the two inches of clay or three inches of clay and put down black dirt. Do I need a permit?" We said, "If you're only going to take off your top layer," I mean, all that's basically your grass, a little bit of your, you know, down a little bit. We don't really have a permit for that. But, but we said, "But you cannot change the, you know, the grade of your property. You can't force water onto someone else's yard. You can't change anything in your backyard." If you're just, he said, "Nope, I'm just taking off the clay and putting black dirt. It'll be exactly the same." But now my understanding is it's about six inches down or something.
It is terrible.
You mean bigger backyard with like a five-foot drop-off?
That piece of shit mess in his front yard. It's just.
That's how we had to, if we did it, we had to have a contractor come over and do it. Yeah, my next question, do you have any idea who we look at?
No.
It's, it's doable. We did it in the city of Winstead more than once when I did their co-enforcement.
Yeah, I mean, this is a long enough for you to take some action.
I'm guessing Wayne can help us with that as a contractor.
Yeah, it sounds like they've got registration.
So I don't want, I was wondering if we should just have a, um, them motioning us what.
Yeah, I mean, frankly, we don't really even need a motion, just a consensus for which option we'd like to pursue.
Yeah, well, I guess I would move for the abatement.
Yep.
Okay, what do you think, Kirby? You're thinking. I can see the wheels turning.
Um, I'm, I'm thinking that I, I wish we had all five of us here to talk about this without making a big decision like this, without having either two conclude it. That's, that's what I'm thinking. But that's, I would agree with the abatement, but like I said, I wish the other two were here to also discuss it.
And I apologize, I don't have your code up, uh, in front of me at the moment, but off the top of my head, I do believe that you have, uh, several, um, notice and hearing requirements in that. So I, uh, certainly suspect that this will come before you at least once before that abatement occurs. Um, I think, you know, if for no other reason than I would want to break you the quote for what the cost is before you.
Yeah, the bullseye just won't be there.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So you'd like us to pursue them that option?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
How many did work with you?
Yep.
Deb, how many times have you reached out? I mean.
We did two. We were required, we were required to do two certified letters. We did two certified letters. And they did pick them up inside for them.
But they just never acknowledged?
No, and actually Wayne and I were on site, um, two times and talked to them. Ben Shaw was with us one of the times. So, and he came to city hall once and, um, they're just, that responded.
I just don't understand that I can sit there with that mess and everything and just not do something.
Okay. Um, and so then the last thing I have for you, which is not on, uh, my memo and which is a bit bittersweet for me, is to let you know that this will be my last meeting with you. Um, I did accept a job with the city of Minneapolis, which, uh, because of awkward timing, starts right before my last day will be right before your next meeting. So, um, I did want to let you know that James Monje in my office is taking over all of my, um, city clients and that he, um, and I will be in touch with DAP and, um, anyone else as needed to go over, turn over ongoing projects. So, it's been a pleasure working with you.
So I was just gonna say, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thanks.
In a short time.
Yeah, in a short time that you accomplished a lot.
Thanks, so thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah. Was it us or?
Just do, just.
All right, uh, we have no old business, new business, whatever about it. Um, upcoming meetings, this, Mark and Mark, we have a meeting on Wednesday, July 10th at 5:30 as well as a planning and zoning meeting at 7 o'clock. Um, we have the, like Devin was talking about, the July 29th, um, special council meeting at 3:30. The next city council is August 12th. Uh, the streetscape meeting is August 21st. Oh, August, um, uh, July 11th is the, I have a 12th, um, coalition meeting. And then planning and zoning, August 21st and council's 26th. So, any acknowledgements?
Fire burn. They did, they did the house burn and.
Didn't burn anybody else's?
Didn't burn anything else, man.
They burned our first pot, first thing.
All right, and, uh, we acknowledge Amy for her work here with the city. And, um, I just want to make a comment on, um, Coco and John. I've seen those two boys out a ton, um, working, doing so much in the city. Um, so I just want to acknowledge their hard work as well.
Oh, yeah, I did want to make a comment on ours. Summer hires. They're, they're doing an awesome job, I think.
Yeah.
Anyway.
They're pretty good.
Yes.
I forget all about them. Even though I see them, yeah, sorry.
Oh, no problem.
They're always, um, smiling, waving.
Yep.
You know, sticking up for the city when they need to. So it's nice to see that, too.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. All seven?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or adjourned?